The one in front of us tonight. With that, back in 2020, we were notified that there was some studies that were occurring, that there was a potential for a project at the Moorhead substation, which is south of Moorhead. And at that point in time, between 2020 and 2022, Moorhead Public Service received two notices to construct. One was for 80 MVA of shunt reactors. Again, that's very technical. And along with that, any additional needs to, within the substation, to build that out, to make sure we had enough capacity and enough room for everything that was being required of us, of those notices to construct. With that, we have been working on this project since 2022. You've probably seen some award bids or approvals over the past several years. This project is currently ongoing. Several council members have seen that in person as we did a facilities tour in the fall of 2023, along with, we've got a couple of former commissioners or commissioners that are currently on the Moorhead Public Service Commission. Again, this is a great project overall. This has very minimal or no impact to rates for Moorhead Public Service because of the cost recovery we get. Over the next 10 to 15 years, we'll be receiving that cost recovery from SPP to build out this facility, which is a great thing because, again, it does not have any impact to rates from that. I'm going to let Chris Hogan go ahead and talk about the bond sale that occurred today, and we'll follow up with any questions.
Thank you, Travis, and welcome, Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight from Baker Tilly, Chris Hogan, to present the results of the bond sale that happened earlier today for the city of Moorhead, Moorhead Public Service. I always like to start, just give a brief overview of the market. This is a five-year graph that shows a 20-year general obligation bond, a double-A rated, and a 25-year bond, a revenue bond. As you can see, the low point there were pretty much all-time low interest rates. That was during the pandemic, and since that time, you can see how rates have gone up steadily. The Fed increases, we had 11 Fed increases over the last two years for a total of five and a quarter rate hikes. And then if you notice on the far right, since we started this process, the bond sale process, which was October, November, you can see since that point until now, how much the rates have come down, and it's about three-quarters of a percent. So again, the city sold 27,810,000 public utility revenue bonds, Series 2024A. The proceeds were used to finance various electric improvements that Travis gave more detail on. The bonds had a 20-year repayment term. At the end of November, we were showing a true interest cost expectation of 4.35%. Last week, we're estimating a true interest cost of 3.569, and the actual sale results today ended up being a 3.504. The bonds received 14 bids. The lowest bid was from TD Securities at the rate of 3.504. Bids ranged from 3.504 to 3.643. As part of a rate, as part of a bond sale, you go through a rating process, which we did with the, with the public, with the Moorhead Public Service people, Baker Tilly and Moody's. As the city is aware of this, it's, it's the measure of the city's financial strength and their ability to make payments in a timely fashion. It indicates the likelihood of default. The higher the rating, the less likely to default, the less likely to default, the lower the interest rate investors will accept. So we had a rating discussion with Moody's Utility Staff and Baker Tilly. The utility staff and Baker Tilly prepared a rating presentation in advance of the rating conference. We had the conference on December 20th. Moody's assigned a double-A2 to this issue and maintains the double-A2 rating on the enterprise's outstanding revenue debt. And they did receive an upgrade at the same time the city was upgraded back in August of 2023, so they were upgraded from double-A3 to double-A2. This is just a chart of the three primary bond rating agencies, Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. You can see the highest rating is double-A, or triple-A, sorry. And then you can see both the city and the utility are double-A2, so it's a very good place to be, a very strong credit rating. Some of Moody's comments, the strengths they identified was a local rate-setting authority, strong liquidity. The only, only credit challenge they identified was moderate customer concentration. They continued comments, "The city's combined utility enterprise has a strong customer base and service our area in the city of Moorhead. It benefits from the local rate-setting authority with regular increases in competitive rates, over 450 days cash on hand and a four-times debt service coverage. The system's low debt ratio is expected to grow more moderate levels with the current issue and future borrowing plans, but still, coverage levels and days cash on hand will remain solid, given the planned annual increases." So our recommendation is to approve the resolution awarding 27,810,000 public utility revenue bonds, Series 2024A, to TD Securities, based on their low bid of 3.504.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from council? Right, seen none. This is excellent news. I really appreciate you coming and providing this information to us. Travis, did you have anything additional that you wanted to add? Or council, did you have any questions or comments for Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, talking with Chris a little earlier today, 14 bidders. That sounds like it's not normal, so it's a really good thing. Usually it's six to eight, so the, the amount of bids that came in was a, was a good thing to have. Overall, the, the percentage on the, on the interest was a good number as well, too. So we're very happy with the outcome.
Well, thank you so much. And with that, I think we're going to just skip to 14A, which is a resolution to accept the offer on the sale of the city of Moorhead Public Utility Revenue Bonds. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
White move to approve.
Second, Niesmeyer.
A motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Seen none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sign. Right. Approved. Thank you so much. Right. Moving on to the approval of the January 8, 2024 meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
No move.
Second, Nelson.
Motion by McDougal and a second by Nelson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And sign. All right. We are now on the agenda item for citizens to address the council. We have 15 minutes on the agenda for citizens to address the council, and I know that I have five individuals that want to speak, so that's exactly enough time. So for those who have requested to speak, this is how this works. You will come to the podium, you will state your full name, and whether or not you are a citizen of Moorhead, Minnesota. You will have exactly three minutes to speak. This little contraption up here will show you your time. The green button will indicate that your three minutes are going. When you see the red light up, that means that you need to stop, that your three minutes is done. Citizens addressing the council, that is not an opportunity to have a back-and-forth dialogue with the council members. It's just your opportunity to give information to myself and the council members. They won't be asking you any questions, and you won't be getting any, necessarily any information from us. There are times where I might ask either our city manager or our city attorney to respond if it's something that I know that could be answered really quickly for you. Otherwise, we will just take it under advisement, and we may have somebody speak to you out in the lobby area. So with that, the first individual that we will call up will be, sorry, Dwayne. And I'm not going to say your last name because I do not want to mispronounce it. So I'll allow you to say your name, and if you're a citizen of Moorhead, and then the timing, our city clerk will start the time.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Prabula. I'm a Catholic priest of the Diocese of Crookston. I live in Moorhead. Thank you for the privilege of speaking here for a short while about the tragic conflict and war that's going on in the Palestinian territories and Israel itself. As you know, it's to be acknowledged and mourned that the massacre of 1,200 persons and kidnappings of 253 persons by Hamas was horrific. This act of terror was denounced by everyone who is a peacemaker, denounced by world leaders, including the head bishop for us as Catholics, Pope Francis. Current reports are that over 25,000 children, women and men, have been killed. More than 62,000 children, women and men, have been wounded or maimed for life. About 50% of those who have been killed or buried beneath rubble are children. Pope Francis, by lead bishop in Rome, has stated this and close to all peoples who suffer, both the Palestinians and the Israelis. May the weapons be stopped. May there be a ceasefire. Weapons never lead to peace. Enough, brothers and sisters, enough. On October 23, he stated this, speaking with the president of Israel, Yisrael Haasak. It's forbidden to respond to terror with terror. Those people responsible for the 12,000, 1,200 deaths in Israel should be held accountable, but not the Israelis. The conflict has gone beyond war. This is terrorism. My suggestion is that cities like Moorhead and Fargo might promote peacemaking efforts, even among ourselves and our communities and people who are far away, who are related to us, one way or the other, by doing such things as welcoming, continuing to welcome public forums, and host or suggest locations for these public peaceful forums. The council itself might send a delegate or a delegation to observe, listen, and learn as well. Thirdly, to consider creating a balanced and brief resolution statement with regard to the issue at hand, affecting the populations of our communities of this area. There are people who are both of Israel and of the Palestinian territories living among us, and who are really suffering because of the deaths that are, that are, and the sufferings that are going on. I do acknowledge that the, are, there are peacemaking peoples among the Jewish people. Do I see the green, oh, the Palestinian peoples and people who strive as peacemakers here in the FM area. This is true in the entire Holy Land as well, as well as around the world. Thank you for your kind attention. I've skipped around a little bit just to say that for our concerns as Christians, about 6%, 6% of the Palestinian population are Christian. And I will say also that I have visited that, those countries twice over the last 40 years. Thank you.
The next individual is KJ Atkinson.
My name is KJ Atkinson, and I am a Fargo resident. I myself am not a resident of Moorhead, but I will be speaking on behalf of just two of the many Palestinian-Americans that are Moorhead residents who are unable to speak due to the incredibly high risk of prosecution if they were to do so. As much as the Israel-Palestine conflict may seem like a problem, far removed from us here in the Moorhead area, it is not. Israel's occupation has made it so that if a Palestinian advocates for their own people, they will be unable to return without severe and unjust prosecution, forcing their silence and invisibility within their own communities. This is a suppression of both their freedom and their speech. Though they may try to silence them and bar them from speaking, they will not be made voiceless. They, as your constituents and fellow human beings, matter. What they have to say deserves to be heard by you, the representatives, as not only Moorhead residents, but too, as American citizens. I will make sure they and their pleas for you to call for a ceasefire are heard. They write, quote, "Hi, everyone. It's Hassan, and I'm still alive," the words we wake up to every morning, followed by a heart-shattering message of the despair and abject horror Gazans are suffering. It is essential, I note, these videos have gone on for over 100 days now. Over 100 days where they've had to watch from afar their people being massacred at an unprecedented rate. They continue, quote, "Palestinians have been screaming for over 75 years for someone to hear their pleas to stop the abhorrent crimes against humanity happening on a daily basis. It breaks our hearts to know that no one is listening, that no one is calling for an end to this terror. Something they express often is the tremendous toll it inflicts upon them to constantly be forced to justify their own humanity and why they deserve to live. They are people just like you and me who should not have to try to convince and persuade people to recognize their validity and right to life, one of the most simple human rights bestowed upon everyone. Every single person, no matter who they are, no matter their racial, ethnic, or national background, has the right to life. Despite the constant hardships and prejudices they face as Palestinian-Americans within the ongoing conflicts, they press on, pursuing education, work, and strengthening our community. They need you to know, quote, "Us Palestinians reside in this country, in these states, and in this city. We deserve to have the same rights as all others." They and their family members who are stateside are experiencing constant trauma as they watch with a painful silence and a heavy weight of despair the slaughtering of their family and friends on the screen. Explosion after explosion flashing across as another home, another school, another hospital gets blown to bits, leaving nothing but dust and rubble and the bodies crushed beneath them. What can you say when you watch your parents and your grandparents sorrow-stricken faces watching their homeland be razed and the blood of their loved ones being spilled? Their emotions, a messy array of anger and pain, hope for an end, heartbreak as the masses are lost, a deep-seated feeling of helplessness, and an ever-aching pit of emptiness. They say, quote, "My mind is on a loop watching a genocide unfold before my eyes. It's a genocide of my people. It's a genocide of children. It's a genocide of men, women, and the elderly. None of us are okay. We are suffering as bombs are dropping. We see the world keep spinning, and we keep dropping. I end this with a simple yet imperative request for you to call for a ceasefire." Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual, I just have a first name, Alheen. If you could state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Moorhead, please, and then your three minutes will begin as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you. My name is Aleen Mahmoud, and I am a resident of Moorhead. Good evening. An unprecedented onslaught against Palestinians is creating a hellish apocalyptic environment that we are witnessing every single day on our screens. In just over 100 days, more than 25,000 people have been killed, with thousands more dead and buried under the rubble of their homes. Recent reporting estimates that 10,000 children have been killed. Compared to the 3,000 children killed in all armed conflicts in 2022, the horror that Palestinian children face is undeniable. Nearly 2 million people in Gaza are now internally displaced with no certainty that they can return home. The Honorable Commissioner stated, "There is no safe place in Gaza, whether in the south or the southwest, whether in Rafah or anywhere in what is unilaterally called the safe zone." In just 15 weeks, 1% of the population in Gaza have been murdered due to it bombs, Israeli gunfire, and the citywide blockade under control of Israel. 30,000 bombs have been dropped on Gaza in 100 days, equal to a little more than two nuclear bombs. Death from starvation, hypothermia, and succumbing to wounds and diseases are rampant as a direct result of this illegal blockade. The UN and WHO have warned starvation and disease could become larger killers than direct attacks from Israel. The warnings have been ignored by the Israeli government, who, according to international humanitarian law, have assumed responsibility for the safety and security of civilians in Gaza. According to the World Food Program of the 700,000 people in the world currently facing catastrophic hunger, 577,000 of them are in Gaza. Palestinians in Gaza are now in a state of catastrophic famine, and in the face of this carnage, nobody can afford to be silent. To put this in perspective, Moorhead has a population of almost 45,000 people with about 10,350 children. The level of destruction will kill over half of the Moorhead residents, including almost every single child in the city. All the bombs dropped in Gaza, an area seven times larger than Moorhead, would level this entire city in three horrific months. I cannot imagine the suffering, grief, fear, and trauma, knowing everyone you grew with, loved, and cherished are all killed in horrific manner. As much as we may think this is a far-off, remote conflict, the reality is many of our community members are deeply affected. It is important to extend our grievances and stand in solidarity with our Palestinian-American neighborhoods, neighbors in Moorhead. Speaking for a ceasefire speaks for peace. It speaks to protect life, speaks to protect humanity. It serves to educate and acknowledge that our own government's support of indiscriminate bombing and blockade of Palestinians in Gaza is unacceptable. As a Moorhead resident, I ask we join with Doctors Without Borders, Save the Children, UN General Assembly, and 68% of Americans to demand immediate ceasefire. Tell our leaders in DC that writing blank checks to facilitate the slaughter on innocent Palestinian people is unacceptable. Stating that Moorhead stands against the genocidal massacre and Palestinians should be allowed to breathe, heal, mourn, and rebuild their homes in safety is an honorable action that we must obligate ourselves to take. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And the last individual is Umea, Umea. And I apologize, I probably am not pronouncing your name correctly, and I don't have a last name. But if you can come to the podium and state your name, if I said it correctly, and whether or not you are a Moorhead resident, then your time will begin.
My name is Umea Bukar, and I'm a resident of Fargo, North Dakota. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, and fellow advocates for justice. Today, I stand before you with a heavy heart compelled to address an urgent and deeply distressing issue that demands our collective attention and action. The ongoing genocide in Gaza, not conflict, not war, but genocide. As a first-generation college student who, for the longest time, viewed the United States as a nation of immigrants, it baffles me that many still choose to stay silent in times of oppression. The situation in Gaza is a humanitarian crisis that has persisted for far too long, causing immeasurable suffering to innocent lives. First and foremost, it is crucial to acknowledge the gravity of the word genocide, which, according to Britannica, is the deliberate and systematic destruction of a racial, ethnic, religious, or national group. And it is a crime against humanity that strikes at the very core of all of our shared values. In Gaza, countless individuals are enduring the consequences of a conflict that has escalated to the level where lives are lost daily, and entire communities are on the brink of collapse. Every person, regardless of background, deserves to live in dignity, free from fear and violence. So by turning a blind eye to the genocide in Gaza, we risk betraying these fundamental principles that bind us together as a global community. Furthermore, the ripple effects of the crisis in Gaza extend beyond its borders, contributing to regional instability and undermining efforts towards peace. We must recognize that addressing the root causes of the conflict and actively working towards a just and lasting solution is the best interest of global peace for all. Our collective voice can be a powerful change. We must urge our leaders and the international community to take decisive action to end, to end the genocide in Gaza. It is our duty to demand accountability for those responsible for human rights violations and to support initiatives that promote reconciliation and lasting peace. All in all, let us not be silent witnesses to the suffering in Gaza. We must stand united in our commitment to ending the genocide, advocating for justice, and fostering a world where the rights and dignity of every individual are respected and protected. The time to act is now, and history will judge us by the choices we make in the face of this humanitarian crisis. Council members and Mayor Carlson, please, I urge you all to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Free Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I believe that those are the, those are the requests to speak that I have on this particular topic. I want you each to know that we appreciated you coming to give us this information, but as I stated, this isn't one where council members will ask questions or even comment on what you're saying. This is just an opportunity for citizens to provide us with this information. I will say that the city of Moorhead strives to be a community that is inclusive, and under the purview of the power that we have, which is delivering essential services in regards to public safety, street maintenance, sewers, lighting, and things like that, we want to make sure that every person who lives within the boundaries of our community feels safe and included and welcomed and accepted. So that is one of, some of the values that we have within the city of Moorhead. So thank you for coming tonight and utilizing your right to speak. The next individual who wanted to speak tonight is Daniel Omani. If you could please come to the podium, state your name, and whether or not you are a Moorhead resident, and then you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Daniel Omani, a resident of Fargo. I came here to shed some light on the approval of the Onyx by Anger Liquor License. In front of you there, you'll have a package that pretty much goes by everything that I'm going to talk about today. I don't need to use all three minutes. I just wanted to get that package to you guys and have you guys go over it. And the decision then is up to you guys to make going forward. I think that's all I have to say today.
Okay. And Mr. Omani, I did read the information that you provided, and I just want to also provide the information that you and I have already met prior, along with our chief of police. And I also spoke with, because you provided this information prior to council, I know that your issue has to do with some money that is owed to you by the owner of Onyx. And our city attorney, Christopher McShane, who is sitting in for city attorney John Shockley, he was going to address whether or not that is even under the purview of the city of Moorhead, or if that is something that is part of a license, a liquor license, an issue related to an owner of an establishment who may or may not owe money to you. So I, Mr. McShane, if you could maybe address-
I don't mean to cut you off, Madam Mayor, but the business owes me money, not the individual.
Correct. And, yep, and Mr. McShane is aware of that. So if you could maybe just address that really quickly so that everyone is aware of the legality surrounding that.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. Mr. Omani, with respect to the city of Moorhead and the liquor license application, any interaction between you and, and the business and who owes what money, that's a matter that, that you are going to have to deal with directly with that business, and you can, it's a civil matter that will have to be dealt with through the court system. It's not something that the city of Moorhead can address, whether it be in the liquor license or in any other manner. So we, we encourage you to, to address those concerns directly with the, the business itself.
And then a quick question for you, because under your subsection 2-1-10, it states that during the application process, you're supposed to make clear to the city anybody that has a financial interest in the business. And if the individual or the business refuses to do that, that's grounds for them to get denial.
Mr. Omani, we've already went over this several times with you, so your time is complete now.
Okay.
So you're going to need to pursue this civilly between your attorney and the other attorney.
I already have a civil case. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to number nine, which is a public hearing to authorize filing of an application for the Federal Transit Administration for 2024 operating and capital assistance. I will be turning this over to Lori Van Beek, but before we do that, could I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of the agenda item?
Move, Niesmeyer.
Second. Soldville.
A motion and a second. A motion by Niesmeyer, a second by Soldville. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The public hearing is open, and I will turn this over to Ms. Van Beek.
Thank you. Tonight's public hearing is about a Federal Transit Administration application for 2024 operating and capital assistance. And the projects are listed on the, on the overhead and computer there. We have operating assistance and as well as for capital projects, engineering assistance for shelter improvements, the purchase, purchase of an on-demand vehicle expansion, the replacement of our fair media sales equipment, and the rehab or replacement of one's shelter, and then a senior ride van replacement. So those are the, the projects that are before you for this public hearing. I have not received any comments in advance of the public hearing. The one item that was not, everything is in the 2024 mass transit approved budget, with the exception of the engineering for shelters. That is a, a new project that would be funded 80% with federal money, and then 20% from mass transit reserves from our capital improvement funding, which is the $3,000 local share. We have about six shelters that are ready to be placed, and we just need some engineering work done for the concrete work so that we can place those shelters. So, and then I do have a budget adjustment before you for that engineering of the shelters. And then the, because it's in the budget, we already have identified revenues for all of the operating funds, including state revenues, and a local share match is in the capital improvement funds that have been allocated for mass transit.
All right. And are there any members of the- And are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in regards to the Federal Transit Administration application? Again, any members of the audience who wish to speak to the application for the Transit Administration? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
So move, Niesmeyer.
Second, Nelson.
And Niesmeyer with the motion, Nelson with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. And with that, I would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution to authorize a budget adjustment and filing of an application for the Federal Transit Administration.
White moves to approve.
Second.
Of White with the motion, Karun with the second. Any further, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And sign, all right, that resolution carries, that motion is carried.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Van Beek. Moving on to number 11 with our engineering department. And I will turn this over to city engineer Bob Zimmerman in regards to a construction agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I would characterize tonight as a big milestone for the downtown underpass project. There are three actions presented for your consideration, 11A, B, and C. And I propose to give you a brief overview of each before answering any questions. The first of those is to approve a cooperative construction agreement between Mindot, Clay County, and the city. That agreement outlines responsibilities of each agency for funding, construction, and for ongoing operations and maintenance. For the agreement, Mindot, as they have thus far, will lead the project, oversee construction, and direct all the construction activities. The city staff will be fully engaged throughout the project and will actually take a lead role in the utility relocation portion of the construction. The ongoing O&M responsibilities are briefly outlined in the mayor and council communication. Basically, it covers all of the infrastructure involved, streets, stormwater facilities, retaining walls, bridges, sidewalks, trails, lighting, and traffic signals. All of the cost share for ongoing responsibility is consistent with Mindot's statewide cost participation policy. Staff has reviewed those. We met and discussed those with Mindot and find nothing out of order with what's proposed in the agreement. And then lastly, the agreement includes a preliminary schedule of cost participation. And that's based on Mindot's statewide policy. And it is preliminary, as bids have not been, as a bid has not been received yet. But based on the preliminary estimate, the city's cost share for the project is approximately $10.6 million. That full amount is covered by various federal and state funding sources with no local funds required. The one caveat to that is that the city may be required to participate in some change orders as the project proceeds. At this point, based on estimates, we understand there's a small reserve of state funds that will still be available. Those would be applied first, and then following that, any city cost participation, we would anticipate, could be paid through municipal state aid funds that are available to the city. The second action, 11B, is to approve various property rights. And just to be clear, these are property rights that the city is granting to the state, which is entirely separate from property acquisition and property rights the state is securing from private property owners. These property rights being granted by the city are almost entirely temporary construction easements with some minor permanent and fee title, permanent easement and fee title rights. Those are all summarized in the table attached to the mayor and council communication as well as the maps packet. The city will be reimbursed for the cost to cure certain impacts. The first of those are impacts to Fire Station Number One due to the loss of access to First Avenue North. That cost to cure is $1,669,000. And I believe on tonight's agenda was a bid award to proceed with that reconfiguration of Fire Station Number One. The second cost to cure is associated with Memorial and Davy Park. And that will be to remove, restore, and replace playground equipment, beaver statues, and some trees. And those actions are necessary for storm sewer that will be constructed through the park. In total, the value of all of the property rights being granted is $2,836,800, less the total cost to cure of $1,802,500. Results in a balance of value of $1,034,300. And again, essentially, all of that value is for temporary construction easements, not permanent, permanent rights being granted. Because of the temporary nature of those easements and the fact that we are a funding partner for this project, staff's recommendation is to grant those easements at no cost to the project. And then finally, the last action, 11C, to approve a detour agreement with the state. So to construct the project, Mindot will establish a detour route to detour trunk highway traffic. That detour route will be from, on Main Avenue, from approximately A Street to 21st Street, and then from 21st Street from Main Avenue to Center Avenue. And again, per statewide cost participation policy, the city is reimbursed for that redirection of trunk highway traffic to the city streets. And this draft agreement covers that reimbursement. The actual final reimbursement will be based on the number of days of the detours actually in place. Then finally, just a brief word on project schedule. You likely recall, will recall that this is being delivered through a process a little different than the normal design, bid, build process. This is through a construction manager, general contractor method of project delivery. The project is currently in the bidding phase, so Mindot anticipates receiving the construction bid for this project on February 2nd. If all goes well with the bid received, construction's anticipated to begin in March and to be complete sometime in 2026. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to take a shot at answering those.
I just have two really quick questions, Dr. Zimmerman. How many years have you worked at the city of Moorhead? We'll say over 30?
Over 30.
Over 30. Has there ever been a project of this magnitude where there hasn't been substantial local funds that have had to contribute? Is this the first one?
That's a loaded question. There has not.
So kudos to city staff for all the work that you did to ensure that there were no local assessments that had to contribute to this underpass project. Even though it's a Mindot-led project, we did not have to have our citizens be assessed for any portion of it. So just a huge shout out to you and the engineering department and the rest of the staff. This is quite a phenomenal feat.
It really was a team effort. And it wasn't just the engineering department. I'd love to take credit for all of it, but we can't do that. There's a lot of city staff involved. I really want to call out Lisa for her efforts. The city council, mayor, your efforts, the city council for lobbying efforts with the, with our federal delegation and the state delegation, and the federal delegation and state delegation for delivering all the federal and state funds that are being applied to this project. And we have an amazing partner in Mindot delivering the project.
Yep. Well, and a number, like you said, a number of our local delegates to the state. This has been an ongoing project for many, many, many years. I know when Senator Clubashaw was here, I think eight times, nine times? I'm trying to remember, eight or nine times.
Nine, I think, yeah.
Yeah. So, any questions or comments from members of the council, council member White?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, one of the items I noticed on there was some funding that we'll get back from, we'll get from Mindot. It's, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but $8,531 for the number of days of detours. And so I just wondered what we plan to do with that and if we are dedicating that or some other funds to maybe help alleviate some of the pressure on the folks that are directly impacted. I'm thinking in particular, some of those businesses that have already, you know, taken a hit because of other construction projects, and now we've got this one coming.
At this point, those are funds that represent, that actually, believe it or not, represent the wear and tear on city streets for that redirection of traffic. So in essence, those funds would be at the discretion of the city to use. Council seats, but.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. If you guys are okay with it, I think we could take all three in one fell swoop, or would you prefer that we do each individually? Okay, so if there isn't any intent opposition, I would be looking for a motion to approve 11A, B, and C.
So move, Niesmeyer.
White seconds.
Have a motion from council member Niesmeyer, a second with council member White. Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, oh, council member Niesmeyer.
I just want to say, after the previous, the previous underpass, I know that that was one of the comments, that it was a citywide benefit. And although the decisions were made with previous councils, and it was a decision that had to be made because of financing, I am so proud of everybody who contributed, who is sitting here in the room. And years and years gone by, I know that citizens who may or may not be watching at home or will watch this again, it is a burden that we will share in other ways, and it is a benefit to all of us and many, many generations to come. So I just want to give my heartfelt thanks. Perhaps I might even bake. I don't bake, but it shouldn't kill you or anything, Bob and crew. But I, it, it means a lot to the families who pay and willingly and choose the city of Moorhead as a space to live. But it is something that they will look forward to not having that assessment. So thank you again, Bob.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second on the table to approve 11A, B, and C. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all three carry. Thank you very much. All right, we are down to mayor and council reports. Are there any council members who have reports from committees or boards or others? Council member White.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give an update from a recent Red River Recovery Initiative meeting. And for those of you who forget, that's our CAS-Clay Collaborative Opioid Overdose Response Group. So it includes members of local government, nonprofits. It's a wide-ranging number of people. I just wanted to mention some of the things that were reported at our last meeting. In particular, we've seen more recently a really high spike in overdoses. In fact, based on the information that they have right now at Fargo CAS Public Health, it looks like Fargo will have had a month with the highest number of overdose deaths on record. One of the reasons is because of the xylazine contamination that we're seeing in our area. It was more commonly found in opioids, but they're now finding xylazine in meth as well as cocaine. And so just looking at ways that we can get the word out and educate the community, not only educating them about, raising community awareness about this issue. We know we have an opioid crisis, but there's other things that are just exacerbating it. But also, in this, in this particular instance, educating people about wound care. There are some specific things that happen when people inject with drugs that are laced with xylazine. And so just wanted to point that out. And one good resource would be Annabelle Dufault, who's the opioid program coordinator with our Clay County Public Health. And if you don't know, that's a new position, relatively new position, that Clay County has created and will be a great asset to our community and try to address this crisis. Thank you.
Are there any, council member Niesmeyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Shout out to those of our residents who are really interested in food systems. The CAS-Clay Food Partners has three arms of its stool, or three legs of its stool. It would be odd if it was arms, wouldn't it? And so the Action Network, which used to be Food of the North, has dissolved as of this last December. And I had the opportunity to meet with the steering committee and some other commissioners today at a meeting as we are re-envisioning the Action Network. And so the shout out to all of our residents in our local areas to say, hey, if you are interested in food systems and being part of that Action Network, if you ever went to First Fridays at all over the last eight years or any of the many activities and events, please reach out to myself so I can get you connected with that really great group that is envisioning what our new Action Network of CAS-Clay Food Partners will be in 2024 and beyond.
Thank you. And other council members who have any reports? All right, seeing none. There were a number of things that I attended on behalf of the city in the last two weeks. It's been a really busy two weeks. January 1st, there was a planning committee for the diversion authority. That committee is just pretty much tasked with examining things that would be able, that would be going to the general board. Really nothing of great importance. January 11th, the Chamber State of the Cities, probably one of the most high, the highest attendance that they've ever had. So that was a great opportunity to get information out about the great work that we are doing here in the city of Moorhead. And then afterwards, the fellow mayors and I spoke to the leadership group, of which there were a number of Moorhead residents in that group as well. So that was exciting as well. The 11th of January was the Red River Dispatch Board Meeting. There is a new chair of that board meeting. It is Clay County Commissioner Dave Ebbinger. Interviews for the dispatch director position will be occurring in February. And there is still some final work being done on the drawings for the new dispatch center. On the 16th of January, I did an interview with KVLY. They wanted to know information in regards to the work the city of Moorhead is doing in regards to homelessness. I discussed the fact that we provided several hundred thousand dollars to Churches United to assist them with building Silver Linings, which is a facility for individuals 55 years of age and older, also funding to be able to build out the basement so that they could have rooms for families. I discussed the Emory Apartment Complex, which was the TIF for the enclave development, and then working with some of the developers for the North Moorhead Apartment Complex, which is for low-income housing individuals, and the work that we did with Moorhead Public Housing for Maple Court Townhomes so that those individuals could get into homeownership. The Missouri River Energy Service Ambassador Meeting was also held on January 17th. They will be going to DC. So a lot of work was talked about building out Generation, which is one thing that we are really focused on in the city, working with Moorhead Public Service so that as we're expanding, we have the Generation to be able to service individuals who then come to live in our city and have businesses in our city. The 17th of January was also the Clay County Leaders Roundtable with the Chamber. Talked about a number of issues that will likely be coming up during this legislative session. The United Way, I'm surprised that council member Karun didn't talk about her phenomenal presentation that she gave to individuals, part of the Lead United. She talked about just kind of being positive about ourselves, which was a phenomenal, great presentation. More is Not Always More, I think, was the title of it. The Chamber had an additional public policy meeting on January 18th with members of the community. And there was also a Coalition of Greater Minnesota's Board meeting on the 18th, as well as a Home Builders Association New Year's Celebration Event, which we got to share the fact that in the city of Moorhead right now, there are 287, 287 buildable lots. And I'm going to let city manager Molly talk a little bit more about this. But from 2020, from 2021, where we had 287-
from 2021, where we had 284 residential units that were permitted in 2024, or 2023, we had 335, which was an 82% increase from just 2022 to 2023. So, I'll let you talk a little bit more about that, because I know you have some more data. And then last but not least, city manager Molly and I met with the, the factory manager for American Crystal Sugar about ways that we can work together with one of the biggest manufacturers in our city. Great individual, happens to be from my hometown, so, and I had a connection with him already. So, like I said, there was a lot happening in the last two weeks, but it's all phenomenal and really, really great for the city of Morehead. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, city manager Molly, for city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as far as the development report goes, we're compiling a lot of information. It was quite a year, 2023 was. And so, we're putting it together in a report that, you know, rather than starting to share some of it, if it's all right, the plan is to share that kind of in a consolidated, concise way on February 12th, so at our next meeting. So I'll bring that, but-
Can you at least state how we are compared to the other communities in the metro with our residential permits? Just that one as a little enticement?
Well, there were, yeah, there were, there were more single-family homes, or, you know, there was more permitting for homes in Morehead than, say, in West Fargo or in Fargo. I mean, it was quite a year. It was up significantly in 2023 from the year before. So, that was shared at the Home Builders Association event, and the mayor was given the star for the year, Morehead for, for growth and the production of housing and support of it. And so, there'll be quite a bit more detail, but, you know, we talk about '23 being a hard year for development because of interest rates and inflation and a number of things, but we kept on chugging through, and this next year looks to be even better. So we're going to shoot for it, and we'll be setting those goals and then surmising the information so that you can see it here at our next meeting. Really excited for you to see it, and it looks so good, this report. It's going to look really good. So, and with that, there's nothing more to report.
All right. And we do not have an executive session tonight, and I do not believe we have any new business. So with that, it is 6:26 PM, and we are now adjourned. So, good night, Morehead.